Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Kansas City, Kansas Community College Board of Trustees to order this January 21st, 2025. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be held by Trustee Ricketts.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll now read the mission statement, which is to inspire individuals and enrich our community, one student at a time. Cheryl, could we have roll call, please?
Trustee Ash. Vice Chair Chriswell.
Here.
Trustee Gilstrap.
Here.
Trustee Hoskin Sutton.
Here.
Chair Isnard.
Here.
Trustee Ricketts.
Here.
Trustee Scruggs-Andrio.
Thank you. All right. First on our agenda this evening, we will hold our board elections for the 2025 calendar year for board chair and vice chair. So at this time, I will turn the gavel over to our board secretary, Dr. Mosher.
Thank you, Chair Isnard. As board secretary at this time, I would like to call for nominations for the KCKCC Board Chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Brad Isnard for board chair.
Second.
Okay. We're almost there. Do we have any other nominations or any discussion? Okay, very good. With that, at this time, I would request a motion to close nominations and to elect Trustee Isnard to serve as the Board Chairperson for 2025.
So moved.
Second.
We can't hear you done, sorry.
Okay, there we go. All right, let me start again. I'll make a motion that we close the nominations and also that we elect Brad Isnard as chair by acclamation.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I will open nominations for the Board Vice Chairperson.
I would like to nominate Ms. Mary Ricketts as Board Vice Chair.
Uh, second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, do we have a motion to close nominations and elect Trustee Mary Ricketts as Vice Chairperson?
I move that we close nominations and elect Mary Ricketts, Ms. Mary Ricketts, as the KCKCC Board Vice Chairperson.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations to Vice Chair Ricketts.
Congratulations.
All right. Sorry, getting caught up here a little bit. We moved through quite a bit there. All right, next on our agenda is the board assignments for the 2025 calendar year, which will include Board Secretary, Board Treasurer, the representing law firm, our Freedom of Information Officer, and the official college newspaper. Announced that the role of the Board Secretary is traditionally held by the college president, and at this time, I'd call for a motion to appoint Dr. Mosher as Board Secretary.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, for the role of Board Treasurer, which is traditionally held by the college's Vice President of Finance and Operations, this time I'd call for a motion to appoint Dr. Patrick Schulte as our Board Treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, I would call for a motion to continue with McInnany Van Cleve and Phillips Law Firm, more often known as MVP Law, to remain as the college's legal counsel and call for a motion to appoint MVP in that capacity.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, for the Freedom of Information Officer, which is traditionally served by the Chief Information Officer of the college, at this time, I'd call for a motion to appoint Mr. Bob Walker as the Freedom of Information Officer.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, for the official college newspaper, which has been served by the Wyandotte Echo for several years, I would call for a motion to appoint the Wyandotte Echo again as the college's newspaper.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, just an announcement that appointments for board committees, as we have a few small changes, they will be announced at the February board meeting. This time, could we please have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the audience to patrons and petitioners. At this time, I'd invite the public to raise their hands in the chat or approach the podium for the opportunity to address the board. Addresses must state their name and address for the record before making their comment or question. There is a three-minute time limit. Looks like we have...
You have your body in the chat.
Do we have anyone in the chat?
We have no one in the chat.
Thank you.
My name is John Haddock, 17213 Jameson Road, Lubenworth, Kansas, 66048. Also, one of the automotive instructors at Tech Two, and also the KNEA Vice President. Being a past board member of my local district, I found it kind of distracting when people handed out a packet and then kind of talked about it. So I'd like to use my three minutes to hand you guys a packet out to look at, and then Doc O's going to speak after this kind of to that packet. So if I could, I'd like to hand these out. I also would like Mr. Isnard, if I could give you extras to get to the board members who are not here tonight.
That's fine. Yes, please. Please approach. Thank you. Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If you look at this, it's basically in reference to the meeting last month on the floating days that was discussed and on the calendar committee. These are some excerpts from negotiations and emails that were sent. I'd just like you to take a little time to look at those.
Did you have additional public comment this evening, or you were just giving us time to review and we might do that?
I'd just like to use my three minutes for you to review those, or do I need to keep speaking?
If you have additional information to share, otherwise, we'm sure we could look at these and let the next person speak. It sounds like we've got quite a few who are here this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Yelena Azagovich. I live at 14516 West 50th in Johnson County, and I am a former faculty senate president and faculty leadership member of the negotiations committee that two years ago, I guess, I really need to take responsibility. I used the term floating days in negotiations two years ago. That's kind of my term, so I'm going to own it. And when I used that term, I was trying to capture what faculty in the 21st century are doing in education. It's not 1988 anymore, when you only see your professor in the classroom and in office hours. Now, faculty are scheduling Zoom calls on a Saturday because that's when students are available, or at 9:30 at night because that's when the student's kids are down, and that's when the student is available. And so faculty are supporting that type of activity in order to encourage student success. So that term floating days is really mine, where I tried to kind of capture some of those ideas. So if you look at this timeline, and I kind of organized this backwards. So if you look at the May 14th date, there was an email sent to all faculty at the college, all full-time faculty at the college, excuse me, from the Vice President of Academic Affairs, using the term, "These extra floating days are the perfect time to begin to look at your fall classes prior to convocation." One of the things that happened is we were asked to basically over the summer, move all of our online classes and hybrid classes from old Blackboard, I would say, to Blackboard Ultra. So that meant rebuilding a lot of our work in those online classes. And that's the other thing that I think it's important for us to remember, is that students are asking for more online classes and hybrid classes and HiFlex classes.
One minute.
And that faculty have to support that with using these floating days. So if we continue down, there are screenshots of actual negotiations where we talked about these terms, this term floating days. You can see that in your packet. And then is the September 28th email is my original documented email where I said I came up with that idea of, "Let's start with..." A place to start would be to use the academic calendar, welcome back week in August to May graduation as the basis for 182. The contract says up to 182. Five days left over can be unscheduled or float." So that was really the beginning of that conversation, and it really is, the thought really was to support student success. And we have for years had that faculty report back one week before the start of classes in the spring and the fall semester. So I just wanted you to kind of be aware of where that came from, because it is a relatively new term. So I appreciate your time. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I just go ahead and start?
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Suzie Towsey. I'm the Criminal Justice Coordinator here at KCKCC, and I just wanted to expand on what Yelena was talking about, about what activities that professors and instructors do outside of the classroom. So we not only support our students at night and on the weekends, but we also, tech faculty take Students' Skills USA. Coordinators are working. I worked through winter break, and I think that it should be addressed that, and nobody's complaining. We do it because we're wanting to support the college and our students. We're just wanting you to be aware that ours, our jobs are not eight to five. And on the weekend when, you know, the Sunday before classes started, I had three, four students contact me, and I had conversations with it, got students enrolled. So that is some of this in this packet. Also, to talk about the faculty calendar, that the precedent has been over 50 years that 182's come back the week before classes start. I am not a 182, I'm a 212 faculty, but I'm here to support my other faculty members, and that just kind of shows you the precedent that they come back a week before. It doesn't mean that they're not working. And then also, I know the last time, I believe, that the attorney for KCK stood up and said, "We don't have to negotiate the calendar." However, KCK has agreed to negotiate the calendar, and I'm on faculty senate. Faculty senate did not agree to the calendar that was approved recently. So I would just ask that we return the calendar back to either negotiations, and let's negotiate it in good faith. And then we should have a shared governance, and we should be, feel comfortable when we agree on things together, and it's not undermined when things are approved when we didn't agree upon them. So does anybody have any questions for me? It's like speed dating. Not that I've done that.
One minute.
Thank you. And this time, just a reminder to our, my board colleagues, we won't be able to get into questions and answers this evening. We do want to hear all speakers that are here this evening, though, so if you're done with yours, then we'll move on to the next. Thank you.
Excuse me, Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
How many, how many speakers do we have in the room?
Not sure that I can answer that. We've got quite a few.
I think I may be...
Four.
Sign up sheet. I'm the last one on the sign up sheet.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, all set. I'm Darren Elliott, 15905 West 153rd Street in Aletha, Kansas. I'm KNEA president. I just wanted to share with the board tonight a little bit of context. Since the last meeting occurred, some of the conversations faculty have had. You know, faculty returned to campus last week. We had some faculty meetings, have had a chance to talk to a number of faculty. And I think it's important to understand the perception faculty took from the last board meeting, because as board members, you always don't hear those things, but I think it's important for our relationship for those things to be shared. This may not always be the best venue. We have three minutes. There's not a question and answer period, but you know, there may be another opportunity for us to sit down and have these discussions, because I think these discussions are important. I think it's important for us to discuss how faculty are perceived. Faculty who tuned into the meeting last time, some of them left with the perception that there were questions that were asked that were some ways leading questions that indicated faculty were working and getting paid, but were getting paid for stuff they weren't doing. There were questions asked about faculty getting paid for less than 182 days, meaning the college was paying them, but they weren't working 182 days. From the stuff you've seen tonight, from the other speakers, I'm sure you can understand why that perception would be negative, because their faculty, most of our faculty are working well beyond that. It may not be on the calendar day between eight and five, but it's during the weekend, it's during the evenings. After that meeting, our esteemed music faculty sent us a packet of the amount of hours they put in, well beyond their contract hours and well beyond the hours that they're compensated for, for extra pay. And there are tons of other faculty who have those same stories. And so I think it's important for the board to understand that, that faculty are working well beyond those 182 days. And there was a missed opportunity last week, because you're not here all the time. You're not expected to know that. The give and take between the board and the campus community should be to help, to help you understand those things. And that opportunity was missed last week. When those questions were asked, no one took the time to say, you know, faculty do work beyond those 182 days. They do work beyond the hours that they're assigned. And so it's an unfortunate misstep that that happened, because now the faculty perception is, there are folks in the administration and the board who think they don't work what they're getting paid for. And it's not good for relationships. We're about to begin a new system, a new round of negotiations, and I hope somewhere, somehow, we can have a conversation that can transcend what's happened in these last two meetings, and faculty can be recognized for the work they do actually perform. We would appreciate you taking a look at these packets and having some conversation outside of this meeting about a different change in direction for this academic calendar that was passed at the last board meeting. Thank you for your time. Happy New Year. Stay warm. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers approaching the podium, we'll move to the next item on our agenda.
I just want to say, you know, I hope you know in the way that I voted last week, that that was not my perception of faculty. And because I know some previous history from... And because I know some previous history from years ago, some administrators tried to almost make faculties, you know, use a time clock, and then they found out that most faculty was working well over 40 hours a week, some of them 50 hours a week, and then they backed off of it. So you do have my ear. That is not my perception, is that you're getting paid and not working.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the recognitions and presentations. Begin by inviting the presentation of the Birth of Sumner High School, presented by Dr. Margolis, humanities professor, and Ms. Shai Perry, art gallery coordinator.
Hi, how are you all doing today?
Good evening.
I want to start by pointing out that the historical mural that we have out front was such a big part of this piece. That was put up a few years ago, and one of our partners, the Freedom Frontier National Heritage Area, reached out to me and said, "We would love for you all to do another project." And that's how this began, with a grant from them to put together a traveling exhibition about the history of the Sumner High School. We had the pleasure of working with Mr. Owens before his passing this summer. So we're very happy that the students got to work with him. We have a few of those students here today to tell you their experience during this internship.
Sorry. Hey, yeah, it was great. I'm going to let the student talks, but just to give you the broad outlines. These are four Sumner Academy students that worked over the summer going to the archives. So we went to KU and looked at the Sumner archives. They conducted oral history interviews. We put together a storyline, and we thought about what were some of the more pertinent, important events in the Sumner High School history, including the origins of Sumner High School history. And I'm happy to say, too, we also have a website. So there's QR codes on there. So if you do own the QR code, it will go to a website which has some more of the archives and some lesson plans as well connected to the project. And so I'm happy to say, this Friday, I'll be talking with USD 500. And it's going to go on a tour, and we're going to plan is to go to certain high schools and incorporate the project into the curriculum to talk about Sumner High School history, civil rights, and the larger story of US history. And I want to talk, turn it over to the stars, of course, the students.
Hello, my name's Mariah. And I would say that this project really just brought a sense of connection and honor. Excuse me, honor because I get to speak with alumni there, and the people who walked before me in the same school, and I just wanted to really learn about their story. And I felt honored that I got to share with everybody. A connection because I got to work with other students as well. And I also got to work with graphic design and history, which is also like what I'm very passionate about. So I just really enjoyed it.
Hello, my name's Nivea Williams. I am a junior at Sumner Academy. Doing this project, it really let me connect to the community that I personally represent and allowed me to kind of look into the past and understand how a lot of things that we see now kind of we saw then as well. Kind of a saying of history repeats itself in a way. But it also let me see what other high schools in Kansas, in Kansas was like as well.
Good evening. My name is Mike Hobson, senior. I serve as president of the Sumner High School Alumni Association. What an honor, a privilege to have Ms. Shai and Dr. Margolis and the students work on this project. It tells some of the story and history of Sumner High School, as Mr. Owens always referred to, the rich history and the historical significance of Sumner High School and the community of Kansas City, Kansas. So what an honor. We're thankful, we're pleased, and we can't thank the students and Dr. Margolis and Ms. Shai for their hard work. Let's give them a hand.
As my colleague said, this exhibition panels will be traveling throughout this year to the different high schools, along with curriculum packets for the history professors, so that we can get that local, that local history into our high schools, so it's not forgotten. Thank you all so much.
I'm always pleased to see what Sumner High School is doing. As a graduate, 1957 graduate of Sumner High School. And also, my mother is a grad, was a graduate of Sumner High School. So very good to see.
Yeah, great job. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Okay. Next, I'd invite the presentation of the KC KCC Foundation by Annual Update, presented by Ms. Mary Spangler, executive director of the foundation, and Mr. Eric Dickinson, vice chair of the foundation. Good evening.
Good evening. Hey, my name is Eric Dickinson. I'm the president and CEO of the Urban Ranger Corps in Kansas City. I'm also an original DOT and proud to be the chair of the foundation board. I'm joined, I, I'm joined on the board by 13 other dedicated volunteers and leaders. I'm inspired to serve because of my deep roots in Kansas City, Kansas, with my family here and invested in this community. I'm gratified when Mary Ricketts asked me to join. She's also a Bulldog. She, I can't see if she's here today. My eyes are bothering today. But I am very proud to serve after trustee Mary Ricketts asked me to get involved. So thank you, Mary, even though she's not here. I'm grateful to Dr. Moser, trustee Hoskins Sutton, trustee Brad Isner, who have served on the board as our college representatives in a unified partnership between the college and the foundation. The foundation serves in a supporting role for the college mission to inspire individuals and enrich our community one student at a time. Prime example is how the foundation has impacted. The mission is through the scholarship program. For the spring of 2025 semester, over 900 scholarships have been offered to qualified students. These scholarships are made possible by our many, many donors and valuable people here in the community. Our donors, our alumni, individuals, foundations, corporations, and local business. Thank you all for your donors and what you do for us. Now pleased to welcome our executive director, Mary Spangler, who will provide additional updates.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for the invitation to be here this evening. It is always fun that we, when I can join with a great board leader like Eric, who is also passionate about our mission here at KC KCC. And I've also got to give a shout out to Michael Hobson, who was just with the presentation team from Sumner High School Alumni Association, another one of our great foundation board members. So thank you, Michael. The main point that I want to share with you all is that the foundation is doing good, good work. And we're making an impact on our student body each and every day. To boil down to hard, straight numbers, as you will see in the presentation, the materials, we are doing so far this year with fundraising efforts, we've generated just over, oops, very sensitive, sorry, guys, $2.4 million. And that's 1,337 different gifts, and that's moving. Maybe my voice is activating it, so I'm sorry about that. The, the other detail that I want to share with you all is that not only do we raise funds for scholarship program in support of our students, but also we raise some funds for special programs and, of course, the capital campaign. And the other area of giving that I really want to accentuate tonight here from the podium is that we have a family fund scholarship, and that is our internal giving program. And our employee donors provided 200 students with scholarships last year for the family fund. That is amazing. So thank you, KC KCC employees. On the collaboration front, our main event, our one and only signature scholarship fundraising event is coming up on April 25th at the Technical Education Center. And Eric agreed to hand out cards to each and every one of you, so you can save the date, number one. We welcome your support. And like my teammate Carmen says, invite a friend to join us, especially those who might have an interest in learning more about our mission at KC KCC and the foundation. Another point that I want to make is the endowment growth. We have had good success over the last year in growing our endowment. We've got five new permanently endowed scholarships, and we're continuing to work with current donors who have an interest in legacy giving, is what we call it, where they would like to establish a scholarship in their name that will go on and on and on in perpetuity. So the legacy will be left. I will end with gratitude and thanking all of you, because we are, I, I'm so excited to be here, and I'll be celebrating six years here. It's like, woo, the time has just flown by. But celebrate is truly the key word, because I've seen, I looked at some trend lines from 2019 to today, and we're just showing that growth, which is what we want to do. So thank you.
Thank you. And Eric.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you tell me more about the program on the 25th?
Yes. It is what we call our Hall of Fame Luncheon. We will be recognizing the class of 2025. There are nominations that are pending now of a group that will make up that class, and they were nominated by community members. And the committee process is going through its final touches now. And we'll gather at the tech center in April. We'll celebrate those leaders in education. We will also seek sponsorships and raise funds for the annual, our, our foundation scholarship program.
So this is a luncheon. Now, you, if we invite somebody, we'll have to contact you to let you know that the person's coming.
Yes. Yes. And there is a.
What is the date of that again, please?
Pardon me?
What is the date of that?
Oh, April 25 at 11:30 at the tech center. And yes, there's an official RSVP process where you can call or go online and submit your registration that way.
Yeah. Cheryl will also assist with that. You'll get an invite.
Oh, yes.
We already have it.
Board members, yeah.
Yes, we should have it.
I just kind of heard that she was opening up to the community, right? No?
Yes. If you have guests that you would like to invite, we welcome them. Yes.
It's not just open to the community at large?
No.
Okay.
Not necessarily. And there is a ticket that would have to be purchased. It's a fundraising event.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for those follow-up questions.
I have all my neighbors showing up, so you got to tell me these things.
And Eric, because he's an outstanding rock star board chair, just said, "If you would like to buy a ticket, you would be glad."
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ricketts, Mr. Dickinson. For the PowerPoint presentation, we'll make sure that that gets emailed out to the board. I think it was on a timer that it would go so often. But there's some great numbers in there, so we will send the board a PDF, so you have that. And thank you for what you're doing, and we talked about scholarships tonight. But not to lose sight, the foundation is key in our capital campaign for the downtown center. Mary and I were just meeting today to confirm some numbers, and during the last calendar year, we've raised over $16 million for the, for the downtown center through the capital campaign. So thank you for your efforts on both parts.
No, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. It's made possible. Now, then I'll stop. Good development and good fundraising comes from a clear vision and a compelling mission and a leadership that our trustees and President Moser has provided. That's why good things happen in philanthropy. So thank all of you. Okay.
But before you two walk away, can they hear me? I'm virtual.
Yes.
Trustee Ricketts, I'm virtual. I couldn't be prouder of the work that is continuing with the foundation. You all just, you just make my heart glad. Congratulations on everything that you have accomplished, and we look forward to so much more. Let us know how we can help and support.
Thank you.
Thanks again. All right. Next on our agenda, I'd invite the, oh, excuse me, we're moving to communications. I'd invite the presentation of the 2025 annual calendar of presentations to the board of trustees, presented by Dr. Moser. Yes, thank you, Chair Isnard. In, in your handouts and email, you've received the draft calendar. Cheryl does a great job going through and putting the calendar together in a really visual format for you. And then it is replicated in the narrative form in the board handbook. So I'm not sure if you've had an opportunity to review it or not yet. I do have a printed copy for everyone this evening, and we'll make sure that our other board members get it as well. So Chair, if you desire, and the board's desire, to go ahead and pass it at this time, or take the time to review it and pass it at the next meeting. I'll open it to the board. Do we have any questions or concerns about the calendar that we were presenting?
No questions or concerns, but I just wanted to say thank you, because it's extremely easy to look at the calendar and figure out who needs to do what when. I mean, there's not a whole lot of debate about it. It's right there. So thank you for, for putting that together and really simplifying just that, that whole view of who does what and when.
Thank you. Yeah, Cheryl does a great job at that. Yes, it definitely does help a lot. Twelve months go by very quickly, and it's easy to lose track of these items if we don't have such a clear plan. So appreciate that as well. Well, hearing no questions, I would open it for a motion to approve as presented.
Make a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have announced the edit to the December board meeting minutes. They have been distributed to us, and we are just needing, opening it up, I guess, if there's any questions. Otherwise, we didn't need action on that after all. Okay. We, we did word the motion originally so that they were approved, so long as those amendment, excuse me, amendments were made, and it looks like they have. So if there are any additional questions after the meeting, feel free to reach out to myself, Dr. Moser. We'll get those answered. Otherwise, this is just notification that that was taken care of. Moving to the board committee reports, I'd invite the board finance committee to report with trustee Chriswell.
All right. Thank you so much, Chair Isnard. The Kansas City, Kansas Community College Board Finance Committee met on Tuesday, January 14th. I will start with the usual statement in that the college, excuse me, continues to manage the resource, the financial resources it has extremely effectively. During the meeting, we had several discussions, of course, about financial related items. We also discussed the annual budget calendar, and then there was also an update about the downtown location. One thing that, you know, I like to pull little nuggets out of these meeting, meetings that, you know, just to make sure that those in the public that are watching, who may have any question about this, or curiosity, really. I just wanted to provide a perspective of how much the college has grown since Dr. Moser got here in approximately 2018, I believe it was. And before I say that, you know, the whole idea here is to really increase our assets so that we can do greater things in the community and better serve our students. I think that it's important to say that. And the college continues to invest and reinvest, you know, as the assets grow, the college continues to invest and reinvest, so we are never in jeopardy of having to use, for example, cash to pay our expenses, you know. So it's just, first of all, So it's, it just, first of all, being managed well. Second of all, back to Dr. Mosher's entry into KCKCC. First of all, kudos to you, Dr. Mosher, as well as all of your efforts and the efforts of those reporting to you. 2018, we had 85 million in total assets. And as of the end of the fiscal, end of the fiscal year, 2025, we will have 200, approximate, this is projected, 200 million in total assets. And it's just really a testament to getting down, getting down to business, rolling up your sleeves, figuring out how to best manage the finances for the community to best serve the students. And, you know, I don't know what else I can say to, you know, to really just drive that point home, that the college is continuing to not only manage effectively, but invest and reinvest to ensure the success of our students and of the college. So just wanted to say thank you to everyone involved. Now, that concludes my report unless there are questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Criswell. Hearing no questions from the board, do we have a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the board policy committee with trustee Hoskin Sutton.
Chair and the rest of the board, we did not get to meet this month. I believe we were going to meet on the 12th, but because of the weather, the college was just reopening and the centers had not had a chance to review and give us their feedback and their feedback is important. So we will not meet until February. And hopefully we'll be in time for those three to be at the, brought to the board in February.
Great. Thank you for that update. Do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the board community engagement committee and on behalf of Vice Chair Ricketts this evening, I believe trustee Ash will be giving that report.
Oh, I will.
Trustee Ash, I can cover it. I sent you an email.
Because we didn't meet, so.
Oh, and that's all we were going to share with you all. We did not meet in January. Seems like it became a thing just a little bit. We did not meet in January, but I will share with you all, we have had a phenomenal response on the invites for community members that we have reached out to, to participate in the community engagement team, which I'm so excited about. I love when people get excited about what we're doing. And to be very honest, we're, we're not looking for people that are just going to share with us all the, you know, rah rah, good news, because if we want to become the absolute best that we can be, we need to hear everything, everything from the community. You know, the old school say, we need to hear the good, the bad, and the ugly. We prefer the good, but it'll give us an opportunity to grow. It'll give us an opportunity to, to, you know, to smooth out any rough edges that we have. So it has been phenomenal. We, we still have others that we are reaching out to, but I think at my last count, we have six that have already confirmed and they are excited to be a part of it. We will only meet with them quarterly. And just to reemphasize, our goal really is to share with them all of the great work that is going on at KCKCC from students and staff and faculty. And we also want to make sure that they're sharing with us, you know, the old school saying, you know, let us know what the word on the street is so that we can become better, so that we can become better. That is my report. And we actually start our first meeting with them in February.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair Ricketts. It's a little tough to get used to that, sorry. Thank you so much for your work with that committee. I'm looking forward to that first meeting and hearing the outcome from that. It's been a while coming and I know you've put a lot of hard work into getting that group together, so really appreciate that. Any questions for trustee Ricketts? Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Trustee Isnard, can I add something to that?
Yes, please.
I'm so sorry. One of the things that I think is really important is we, we know that because we're human, we're not perfect, but one of the things that I'm really very intentional about is how do we communicate concerns respectfully and communicate them in the way that, you know, ears will receive them so that we can make progress. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. We had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the ACCT and KACC delegates report. Trustee Ash?
I'll start with KACC. We, last week, Dr. Balog, Dr. Mosher and I went to the Capitol in Topeka on Thursday morning, early, for coffee and donuts with the legislators. And I believe we actually caught five of them. We actually personally saw and talked with five of our legislators up there and we spoke with some other legislators that we happen to know and, you know, that serve on certain committees up there and so on and so forth. But I think we picked up some pretty good information from a couple of them and so that was, that was good. Dr. Mosher has forwarded to you all in your email some communication from Heather regarding, you know, things that are being worked on, so on and so forth, not the least of which is the organization's position with regard to budget. And so there is some really good information in those two attachments in that email that he sent you. And of course, you know, the issue always boils down to how we are going to be funded. And, you know, Kbor makes their sort of budget requests known, which historically tends to slight us somewhat. I'm just going to say it like it is. And so we found that we do, you know, sometimes our best work with going directly to the legislators and those on the various, you know, committees, especially responsible for funding in, in various areas. But, so it is a process. It always starts out with us being what's initially looked at or proposed is underfunded and then we always go to work and sometimes we're more successful than at other times. But really, that's how it works and we have to put the time in talking with legislators and being sure we're consistent on the message and so on and so forth. One of the big issues this year is the Board of Regents is talking about, and you may have heard something about it, 15 free college credit hours for high school students. Of course, we know free isn't ever free and there's no additional funding that's been proposed, you know, with this for, with, with that for this. And we have some, you know, we have some significant concerns about that. There are currently, for example, in this communication, over 39,000 high school students are already taking college courses while in high school between the public and the private colleges with only approximately 34,000 of those that are actual seniors. This policy would cost the community colleges collectively millions of dollars in tuition alone. Increase the cost to the state through the non-tiered cost model and increase the burden on both state and local taxpayers. So we are already working every day, all of our colleges across the state and certainly this college is, we are working with our high schools every day, you know, to get high school students in here to figure out, you know, the payment process of it and how, you know, and how that works. And I, the other real concern I think a number of people have is if we just start making, you know, these high schoolers take college courses, they may not be ready for those college courses. They may not be ready for some of those things. And so we, in a way, you know, we may be setting them up for failure. So let's let the ones that are going to be pursuing, you know, college or certificate programs or, you know, such as that, let's, let's work with them and let's, let's let it be sort of a local issue and let each college work it out with the schools, you know, that they're working for, which is what we have been doing and which, which is what we are doing. So, and that's just scratching the surface on what some of the problems are with that, with that issue. And we want to be very, very careful though about how we go about, you know, posing that because we don't want anybody to get the idea, we don't want to work with the high schools. Nothing could be further from the truth. We're already working with the high schools, you know, significantly and quite a bit. And so what we would like them to do, for example, is fully fund the cost model. As an example, not all of the courses from last fiscal year have even been, you know, fully paid for. So we'd really like them to start by adjusting the funding for XL and CTE and the non-tiered, you know, budget lines. And that, they're big adjustments, adding 3.9 million in new funding to fully fund XL and CTE for fiscal year '26. So it would behoove you really to spend some time getting familiar with this issue because we need a, we need them to fund supplemental appropriation of a mil, of approximately half a million dollars. That would be new money to fund courses and services delivered last academic year through the XL and CTE Senate Bill 155 program. It wasn't fully funded last year. And so that, that is a significant burden on the colleges. So let me just start there by saying, and legislators just starting, so we're going to, we're going to be in this for several, several weeks and a few months as we, as we work toward collaborative solutions about it. The other, the next event for KACC will be the PTK Award Luncheon. That for the last several years has been held in Junction City this coming April. It's on Friday, April 11th. It's going to be held in Topeka, so it's going to be a lot closer for, for us and for our trustees that might want to go. So again, Cheryl and Kristin will be putting some information out. I'll share with you anything that I get on it. I'm sure Dr. Mosher will. And, and as we get closer to it in terms of making our RSVPs and, and so on and so forth, that's the next event for KACC. And then the annual ACCT Legislative Summit begins on the 9th of February and runs through the 12th. And so I, I'll be attending that as our, as our kind of sort of college representative and so on and so forth. And then I am serving on a subcommittee there, so I'll have to be there for that committee meeting on the 8th. And trustee Hoskin Sutton, also her committee meets during that time as well, I believe also on the 8th-
Yes, it has.
-in the afternoon. Mine's in the morning, so, so we're making those plans and those arrangements. And I'm curious if, is our student senate president going to be able to go? Outstanding. Okay, so that's going to be really, really good, obviously, you know, for him and they're one of our best, you know, marketing people anyway, when they start talking to the, to the legislators. We have a new Congress representative, Derek Schmidt, is, is there and is in the place that formerly Congressman Jake LaTurner had. So he's getting organized and getting oriented and getting squared away for the, for the legislative session there. So we're looking forward to meeting, meeting with him. I have worked with him a lot over the years. He was formerly Attorney General here in the state of Kansas and he's been a state legislator and he's done a number of things. So I've had some experience, quite a bit of experience working with him. I think he'll really do a good job for us. And so that is all the, all I have to report and as far as ACCT goes. And Lynn, do you have anything you care to say regarding your committee?
Yes, we are going to meet on Friday. We're having a pre-meeting before we actually meet on the 8th there in Washington DC. So this coming Friday at 1:30, we will have a Zoom meeting to kind of do a little prep because we do pack a lot into our two-hour meeting. So this just gives us a little leeway, a little more time to have a pre-meeting.
Okay, so that would be our report.
All right, thank you, trustee Ash. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, call for a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. At this time, if there are any questions or comments, I'd call for those now. If not, I would call for a motion to approve the consent agenda with one amendment and that is on the recommendations for payment. And the items for ratification, both the date listed at the top says January 21st of 2024. That was just a clerical error, so I would ask that we approve the consent agenda with changing that to 2025.
Move approval with that amendment?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the student senate report with Mr. Sanchez, student senate president.
Good evening.
Good evening. You guys doing good today?
Doing great.
Good.
Thank you.
So we had, went through Wonderland on December 19th. It was successful. We had 59 registrations. Each student parent received toys for their children, a blanket and a holiday mailbag. This week, we had, we have a bag it up. Student Engagement is giving away school supplies and swag bags and we will be at the tech tomorrow. Next week, there will be a Meet the Clubs Student Environment Fair on January 28th from 11:00 to 1:00 in Lower Jewell. Next week, next week's is Student Leadership Series on the 29th from 1:00 to 2:00. It's an introduction equality, inclusion. I will be attending. And next week will be the first student senate meeting on January 31st at 2:15.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sanchez?
Now, if I can just say what a positive individual Joseph is, because he already has plans for the, the flight out to DC. Do you want to share those? We talked, we have our meeting once a month too.
So the day we head out is Super Bowl Sunday. So and if the Chiefs make it, I asked him if I can. Wear all my Chiefs gear out to Washington.
All right.
Absolutely.
I'm going to represent.
Probably won't be anyone on the plane that's not wearing red.
Yeah, Joe's doing great work with this, with the senators and the students and really doing a lot of engagement activities. So he's very concise when he speaks, but there's a lot of projects going on by student senate and by President Sanchez, so thank you.
You're welcome. Move approval of the report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next, we have the president's report with Dr. Mosher.
Very good. Thank you, Chair. I'll start off with some good news-
I'll start off with some good news, but just as a tease, enrollment is looking very positive. And you'll hear more with Dr. Courtney's report. So, last week, we were at the LCDC Annual Meeting, that's the Leavenworth County Development Council. The college is a platinum sponsor of that, so as we're engaged in Leavenworth County, we continue to do more and more. We had excellent representation from the board and the college, so that was great to see. The speaker for that day was talking about the World Cup and all the activities that are going to take place associated with that. And that is, is not just the games, the tournament games, but the practices and all of that. So one of the practice sites is Compass, Compass Springs, right out here, just right down the road on, on parallel. So they'll need some volunteers and stuff to help with that, which may be great activities for our students, student athletes, et cetera. There's going to be millions of people around to, to watch the games. Housing will be something that people will look at, so we don't know what the final answer is right now, but we might look at, if we can do it in a safe manner, to utilize Centennial Hall for housing. And it's not for just the fans, but it would be one of the teams or the support teams or something like that, that we would know treat, you know, the, the facility and our, our student residents with respect. Also, busing, transportation, it's the summertime, we have some very, very large parking lots, so perhaps we become one of the busing stations that takes people out to the, the practice fields. So always looking for some ways to bring in some extra revenue. So that was a, it was a really good event and there'll be more to come on that. Yesterday was a great MLK celebration down with the, down at the UG for the African-American Scholarship Fund. Again, representation from the college and the board. There were 35 scholarship recipients announced, so that was a, it was just a very nice event. As trustee Ash was mentioning, we did the donuts with the legislators. He had some really good coverage on that, that event that took place. If I'll just touch on it a little bit and some other areas. So, K-12 in the state of Kansas is a mandate in legislative funding. Higher education is discretionary and it is a large portion of the budget, so it is one that often gets first attention. The proposed cuts that trustee Ash is talking about for the colleges and technical colleges is nearly $100 million. So what they're looking is doing, looking at the base budget is all, not having things on the budget right now that would normally be on the budget, SB 155 and other programs. The other items that are not on there, $14.3 million for apprenticeship and business partnerships, which was recently started, $17.5 million for student success initiatives, $6.5 million for cybersecurity, $12 million for capital outlay for our colleges and technical colleges. So what that means for KCKCC right now is a potential cut of up to $2.3 million in funding. So, we do need to continue to advocate for what we do. We, we're more than just a taxing, taxing entity. We are the economic driver of our communities. We have all the literature to show that and we will be, I'll share whatever we can to get out and talk about that. The first 15 with the high schools, as trustee Ash said, is an unfunded mandate by Kbor. It's, and we want to help our high schools, our high school students receive college credit while they're in high school as much as possible, but it cannot be an unfunded mandate. So lots of work to go on there. Also, we need to increase the funding for the Kansas Promise Scholarship, and that's the scholarship for technical students in high-wage, high-demand career fields. Because every year, I think it's two or three years into it, we run out of money halfway through the year. So it's not even funded right now enough to support the students to go and finish their programs, which can put them in a bind or new students who want to start, let's say, the AET program or, or welding or any of those programs in the spring, there's no money available. So if we're going to have a program, then we ought to be budgeting enough money to support that program. We'll have lots of opportunities to, to speak to those items when we meet with our legislators at, at a variety of different events. The presidents got together and wrote, all 19 college presidents, community college presidents, a letter which will go to support our cause and our efforts for what we're trying to do this year, and we have a great advocate in Heather Morgans. On a more pleasant note, a little more encouraging, you know, the last several years, KCKCC has partnered with the Wyandotte Economic Development Council to host Career Pathway Student Tours for high school students to go out and visit the different manufacturing sites, et cetera, around Wyandotte County. And in the last couple of years, we've had 589 students participate and they always end here at KCKCC and we serve them lunch. And there's a drawing for one of them to get one of my presidential scholarships for five credit hours. We got a report from Dr. Nettles that approximately out of that 589, 204 have applied to KCKCC. And of those students, approximately 115 have enrolled. So that's a, that's a great investment in time and energies for that. Middle of the week last week, there were 11,534 open jobs in Wyandotte County. Couple of years ago, it was 6,000, 7,000, and 9,000, it's jumped up to 11,000 on a daily basis. And those jobs have an average annual wage of $59,000 a year. So we've got great jobs, we just have to get our folks ready, that's why we're an economic driver. Founded in 2009, Complete College America was formed and it quickly became a national advocate for dramatically increasing students, student success and completion at colleges across the country. We've been looking at joining CCA for quite a while, but it's been cost prohibitive for some of the other projects that we're doing, but it really supports what we're doing with career pathways, with high intervention, advising and those types of efforts. So Kansas is now a state alliance, so we have access to CCA resources and opportunities. And I believe it is at no cost. So, there is a launch for Kansas CCA in a few weeks and we'll have a team going down to that. Vice President Pope is working on that. Let's see, we'll just wrap, wrap it up here. Next week, we'll have a group going out to the AACC, American Association of Community Colleges Workforce Development Institute, their annual conference. I'll be presenting on a panel for AACC and ACTE for the Panasonic Tesla EV Hub and Registered Apprenticeship and how we're doing that to offer students credit on the front end instead of on the back, having to go and request credit for prior learning. That is something that Jamie Dimon got very excited about when we were visiting with them. And it's not the norm across the country. So it's something that is being utilized also in another regional project that's being coordinated at the national level, and I'm trying to think of the name of that right now. But, anyway, we're, it's gathering a lot of attention across the country and, and it's a great thing to be doing for our students. So we look forward to sharing that with other people in the community college environment. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Moser. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I'd call for a motion to accept the report, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have the Executive Vice President's Report with Dr. Baylog. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you Chair Isnard. It's my pleasure to present highlights of our work from this past month on institutional strategy, partnerships and operational execution. You have heard comments from trustee Ash and President Moser on some of our legislative activity at the state level. We are also planning for our trip to Washington next month, scheduling meetings with our congressional delegation as well as federal agencies, positioning the college for grant opportunities, other, other initiatives. So we're looking forward to that. We appreciate the board's commitment to that trip and representing the college in Washington next month. In addition, we are focused diligently on Leavenworth and our comprehensive program and enrollment strategy for the Pioneer Career Center and future plans for Leavenworth. As it relates to strengthening partnerships here in the metro, we are continuing to grow our relationships with organizations like KC BioHub and driving biotechnology work here in the area. We have been their community college of choice within the metro, and so we're excited to contribute to that work. In addition, we're also cultivating relationships with our area schools. That includes visiting Piper High School last month and visiting with Superintendent Jessica Dane, learning more about their career academies and building pathways to college-level credentials, whether they be certificates or degrees here, working very closely with the superintendent in building up those pathways. This builds off of conversations that we've had with Superintendent Staubafield with KCK Public Schools over recent years. In addition, we're also, as I mentioned, Leavenworth, growing our relationships, continuing conversation with the superintendents and principals in Leavenworth County, their schools, CTE Pathways, Next Gen Symposium, Etang Anoxi High School, built off of prior conversations with Leavenworth High School, Lansing and others, really to, to learn more about some of the needs and interests they have in growing career and technical education programming in the schools and ways in which we can complement each other and work more closely with them. As it relates to community and business engagement, growing relationships with organizations like the Shawnee Chamber of Commerce, Overland Park Chamber, as well as Enterprise Center of Johnson County that supports the entire metro, though Johnson County's in their name, really supporting entrepreneurship, innovation activity across the metro. We will be aligning more and more with those types of activities. You heard last month about our application to the Kaufman Foundation, supporting an entrepreneurship continuum here in Wyandotte County, working with local schools, working with university partners, area business incubators, more to come on that. We're also continuing to grow relationships with our university partners for the holidays, building off the work that, that we've done in recent years with the University of Kansas Medical Center, growing that relationship, supporting their workforce needs. Also, while we were in Topeka last week, signed an enhanced articulation agreement with Fort Hays State University, a 2+2 for a bachelor's degree in psychology, opening up more opportunities for our students to continue upper division coursework, and they, they can do that work right here in Wyandotte County. They don't have to leave their homes to be able to complete that coursework with Fort Hays State. We appreciate and applaud their partnership and working with Kansas, Kansas community colleges. Last week, many of you were at the Leavenworth County Development Council Annual Meeting. Sorry I couldn't be with you, was actually celebrating at the Chancellor's MLK Luncheon hosted by Metropolitan Community College. That was hosted at Union Station, their grand hall filled the venue. Pleased to support our friends and partners at Metropolitan Community College on a stellar event. Had the opportunity to visit with Laura Ibsen, the CEO of Lucian, that supports our student information system, as well as meet the keynote speaker in Henry Louis Gates, who was invited in to present, and he blew it out of the park. Finally, as it relates to operations and execution, very proud of the work that our academic team leads performed in preparing for their launch review sessions last week. We are now in a position to go live with four disciplines of execution here at the college. Nine hours of launch review last week, but heard great ideas from our academic program coordinators, our team leads, work that they can be doing within their respective areas to support our students, to support the institution and our work towards accomplishing our goals. Again, enrollment, persistence and completion. And I believe that we're already starting to see some of the fruits of this work with our non-academic areas presenting in November. The support that they're providing our students. We see a 7% increase in headcount year over year this spring. We see a 9% increase in credit hours. And we, with our collective efforts, we anticipate that that trend will only continue. So, thank you for the opportunity and I welcome your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Baylog. If there are no questions, would entertain a motion to accept the report, please?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have the Vice President Academic Affairs Report with Mr. Jerry Pope. Good evening.
Good evening. This was a short report this, this month. There hasn't been a lot going on since we met in December. So just a couple of things to highlight. I did report and I got confirmation that we turned in our HLC interim monitoring report on the 17th of December, so at some point this month, we should hear back the results of that, so I eagerly anticipate that. We also submitted our application to become a PEPP-eligible institution, so prison education program. We have state approval for that, we have Department of Corrections approval for that. Our next step was to get HLC approval, so we submitted that paperwork. And thanks to Ashley Irvin, Associate Dean of Career and Technical Education, for putting together a lot of that document, so thanks to her for doing that. The music department, there are a lot of performances that happened in December and one in late November that I wanted to make sure that we included. So, you know, they performed, actually, I think it was most of the music department, including, most of the vocal, I guess it was all the vocal instructors, so adjunct as well as full-time, including Mr. Stafford and Dr. Binnick, sang with the acclaimed Sarah Brightman. So she's a crossover artist, she was very famous as Andrew Lord Webber's wife. She premiered one of the roles, created the roles in Cats, so she's a very, very famous singer that they were able to do backup for. They also performed, they just got back, the very first week of January, the students, and I think there were 20 students and maybe three faculty members, went to Atlanta to do their performance and conference at Jazz Education Network, a conference in Atlanta, Georgia. And they were, they performed on stage, so that's a very, very great kudos for them. So you can kind of see, we have some others, Mr. Brett Jackson, who's a new faculty member for us, he's been around for a while, but he performed in some national tours. So, we've got music department faculty all over this city and actually all over the country, so that's really a great thing. The welding department, they acquired the state-of-the-art VR Tech's 360 welding simulator, so I know they've wanted that for a while, so we were able to finally get the funds for that. And it will allow students to be able to simulate, and so we don't have to buy quite as many consumables. So it's a really great thing for them. The NCLEX, which is National Council Licenseur Examination, so the licensure examination for our registered nursing programs, our official first-time pass rate is 96.08%. And for practical nursing program, it was 93.94%. So we're really finally seeing, a few years ago, they went through a complete curriculum redesign. So they hired a first-rate consultant, kind of the number one consultant across the country who came in and helped everybody look at the curriculum and they redesigned that curriculum. And so we're really beginning to see, I think, some of the, the fruits of that great project that they went through. Dr. Bohm, who's the Dean of Health Professions and Public Safety, she's serving on the membership committee for the National Network for Two-Year Allied Health Deans, so I know she's already gotten some really interesting information. So, I know she's already gotten some really interesting information from that committee. And then, Dr. Kramer, Dean of Math Science, Business, and Technology, joined the board of the Kansas State School of the Blinds Foundation. So, we do have lots of folks here that are serving in roles both nationally and locally. So, kudos to all of those that are doing that. So, I don't have much more tonight, so with that, I'll take any questions or comments that you have.
Those high-dollar simulators are paying off, right, for those nurses?
Exactly.
Those things are amazing. I still can't get over them.
Yeah, really great pass rates, great news. Excellent report as always, thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Pope. Next, we have the Vice President of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management Report with Dr. Cordy. Good evening.
Thank you. As President Mosher mentioned, a little teaser on our enrollment numbers. The numbers that were in your board report, actually, we have better numbers as of this morning. Our spring enrollment, unduplicated headcount compared to last spring is up 6.8%, and the headcount compared to 2023 is up 7.6%. As far as the semester credit hours, spring 2025 semester credit hours are up 8.7% compared to spring of 2024, and the credit hours compared to 2023 are up 11.4%. And so, yes, wow. It's, you know, I worked for a lot of places, and these numbers are just outstanding. But, you know, I want to say it's a real team effort. It's not just the folks in enrollment management, you know, just everywhere. I mean, you know, given the example, we had some classes that were filling up, and, you know, Jerry in the academic affairs opened up additional sections so we could fill those classes, and so, like I said, it's just been a real team effort. But, we're extremely pleased with the numbers we had. You know, our headcount, you know, is 4,479 this spring compared to a little over 4,194 last spring, and then semester credit hours, you know, big jumps. Semester credit hours, 41,776 for this spring compared to 38,428. And so, these are just great numbers, and so, I just, I said, it's just been a really great team effort for folks. So, many of the highlights, and I've got only five minutes here. You know, our athletics continues to excel, as I shared in the board report. We have 41 of our student athletes got a perfect 4.0 semester grade point average for the fall semester, are doing very well. The fieldhouse is moving along, the fieldhouse, of course, our teams for the spring, you know, volleyball, basketball, they're competing at off-site locations, and they're on a website. They vary from week to week where they're playing, but, you know, the floor is coming along, and the schedule sometime in May to be completed for the fieldhouse. They've got some things going on, but I was over there earlier in the, this last week, and it's moving along, progressing very, very well. And, you know, there's just another big success is, like I said, we're getting more and more students who are interested in KCKCC. Our Success Center showed a significant increase, in fact, in-person comparison from last December to this December, we had a 91% increase in the number of potential students that came into our Success Center, you know, and looking at different programs we have here. So, I said, we're just rocking and rolling, and it's a really great thing when we have this kind of growth. So, I thank, I want to thank, you know, the members of the cabinet, Dr. Mosher, and some of the also sort of marketing things that we've done, you know, with Chris, but like I said, we're doing real well with the marketing and also with retaining students. Our housing is almost completely full, I think we've got one room open, went through a waiting list, and, you know, we're almost full there, so we've got a lot of interest in KCKCC.
Thank you. More great news. Any questions for Dr. Cordy?
Congratulations.
Yeah, well done.
To the whole team. Yeah, to everyone. All right.
All right. Do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have the Vice President of Finance and Operations Report with Dr. Schulte. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the time tonight. I just want to start by reiterating some of the information shared by Chair Chris Well in the Finance Committee. I think, just from a finance standpoint, I wanted to give a little additional perspective as Dr. Mosher and Chair Chris Well talk about the net asset position of the institution. One of the key pieces behind that, as well as as we look at that and as we grow that, take that into consideration on how we're financing the downtown project collectively. I mean, I think about it from the standpoint of taxpayers and dollars and cents to say, a building like that at most institutions, you're going out on bond financing for 30-plus years to look at how you're going to pay for that, and collectively, that has been driven by planning to be able to pay for that building. And the long-term financial impact of that is going to continue this trajectory of success at KCKCC long into the future. And I, again, being 20 years in higher education, different institutions, looking at how we finance different buildings, to be able to have the funds available, be able to do that and change the landscape is collectively a huge effort on the part of the team that's been here and all of U.S. trustees as well. In addition, we get assessed by HLC, other creditors as well. They always look at our debt-to-equity ratio to get an idea to say, how much debt do you have as an institution, looking at financial solvency. Again, that only speaks so well to the position that the institution is as we go forward, so I just wanted to touch on that quickly before I start tonight.
Dr. Schulte, if I can interrupt you just for a minute. I just want to add that even the money that this board committed to that project, we did not raise taxes to do, to fund that. We did not. It was a function of planning and preparation and so on and so on. So, if there's any members of the public who are watching and getting the idea that your taxes are going up because we're doing that, no.
If I may add, and I'll touch on it more when we meet. We've raised over $40 million of other people's money to pay for that downtown building, which will be a $70 million asset for us. So, we're basically building it as we continue this at 18 cents on the dollar for our Wyandotte County taxpayers, and it'll pay dividends for decades to come.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah, I think that's an important piece as we, you know, because again, we closed, you know, my first piece, as we talked last month about the closing of the New Market Tax Credit, that transaction took place December 18th, so we're happy to continue to move that project forward. Excited about the building going vertical and having the financing with the New Market Tax Credits in place as well, which is significant to this institution. As noted in the Finance Committee, we continue to hold a strong financial position as we prepare for that downtown building to be developed. In the spirit of the business office with students returning, the business office and bookstore are offering extended hours of operations for this week and through January 31st to further assist students as the spring 2025 semester gets underway. One of the pieces that we've really focused on under my team and my umbrella as a whole, all the areas that I oversee, is with our 4DX position is how do we provide service and enhance customer service to everybody? That means students, faculty, staff, community members, all parties involved. And again, we take that into consideration as we move through each one of these steps for each one of our areas. Inside of Human Resources, one of the things we're focused on as well is currently and actively recruiting for the Chief of College Police, a controller position, and the Director of the Center for Equity, Inclusion, and Multicultural Engagement. As I came on about six months ago or so, as we continue to rebuild and build those teams, as individuals retire and move on, it's an opportunity for us to be able to explore that, so continuing that process and path as we try to fill each one of those important and vital positions. Inside of Information Services, as stated previously, the preparation continues with the Lucian. I attended the event on Friday with Dr. Baylog as well, the Lucian team, to plan and schedule the upcoming move to colleague and student information systems to software as a service in the cloud, again, with as a real emphasis and focus on how are we providing that service to our students and making it seamless and breaking down any barriers that may be in place for our students currently. The ability to do that really comes in us going out on RFP to look at consultants, to assist us to say, how do we take a zero-based redesign approach for our students? And what that means is, as they walk in the door, from the very moment they're here, what is their experience like? How are we assessing that to make sure we're able to break down those barriers and go, if there is any area where there's a hiccup, where students don't feel informed, where they feel like they don't know the path, where they feel confused by the process, how do we design a process going forward to be able to assist them with that as we make this vital move? The same is true in our colleague utilization and process redesign, is taking a look at, first and foremost internally, while we're looking at the students and other individuals using it as a customer, we also need to look at the faculty, staff, and students using it on campus and saying, what does our process look like? Have we processed mapped that, are we using it efficiently? And what are areas where we can allocate additional resources to assist with the efficiency of making this better and stronger as we move forward? Inside of the area of Facility Services, I just want to give a big thank you to the crew and their work in snow removal and clearance. Safety for the campus community comes first, and given the weather situation that we faced as it was time to come back, they did an exceptionally good job of making sure everything was clear and campus was safe for everyone who was returning. Despite the fact that we didn't have students at that time, we did have employees, and again, making sure that everything was ready and prepared for them, and we just continue that process as we continue to see temperatures drop and making sure we're aware of safety considerations as weather confronts us.
One minute.
We continue to work with our partners on the downtown campus building. In addition, we worked with KC ATA on Tech One bus stop that's been delivered and pending installation, dependent on weather. So, again, providing that service to students that access as well is one of those key pieces. Around campus, we're diligently working on door modifications, so the focus on student experience as well, making sure that we have access in relation to can students get into all the areas they need to on campus, and is it available? Inside of College Police, as I noted, we are working on the Chief of College Police. Tomorrow, we will be hosting three finalist candidates on campus for that role of Chief of Police. In the spirit of comprehensive and community review, individuals will be able to hear the candidates, ask questions, and assess them collectively. And finally, in the Wellness Center, the Wellness and Fitness Center held a Merry Fitness Event on December 9th. Refreshments were served throughout the day as we encourage people to focus on fitness around the holidays, and again, events continue through the month of January into February and spring, with an emphasis on trying to look at health at work and making sure people have opportunities and access to information this time of year. With that, I am, that is my report, and I will open it for questions.
Well, thank you for a great report. What I noticed in the building and facilities and their upcoming goals for 2025, it says that they are going to build a decorative wall in the fieldhouse from stone. What is that going to look like and where in the fieldhouse?
And I may have to yield to President Mosher on that piece of it, or Dr. Cordy, do you know what they're looking at as far as the decoration of the building in the fieldhouse wall?
I don't have the details on that. I think Dr. Mosher might at this point.
I do not.
We will get you, I will get you that additional information. I don't have it from athletics and what they're looking at in the fieldhouse. It's just a portion of the build-out, but I don't know that I have the detail to give you yet, but I will make sure you get.
It said built from stone, and I know a lot of the enhancements we've had have really been nice, so I was just wondering, what is that going to look like?
Yes, we'll make sure to pull that information and get it to you as well. I don't have specifics for you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Mosher, you got something to add?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to add a little bit more detail, because I probably haven't visited with the board too much about this. The KATA stop, bus stop for the students down at Tech, we, currently, there is no cover, no cover for them to get out of the weather when they're waiting on State Avenue for the bus. So, we've been talking about this for a while. We learned that it was going to be another two years until KATA had it scheduled to install something there, and we just made the decision that our students deserve to be able to get out of the weather. So, we went ahead and paid for that bus stop canopy and everything, and then we'll get it installed, so it'll be a nice addition for down there.
It is.
I'm sure they will appreciate it.
It's good news, thank you.
And Dr. Mosher, not to be fun, but I really hope that there's a way that we could put sponsored by KCKCC on it. I think that's something that we should be able to take credit for.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, it is a great idea.
Yeah, we'll follow up, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, hearing no other questions, we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have the Vice President of Educational Innovation and Global Programming Report, and it looks like we have a video this evening from Dr. Raobi.
Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome back. We are so happy to report from Educational Innovation and Global Programming. Just a reminder, the division is composed of Adult and Continuing Education, High School Partnership, Online Education Services, Global and International Programs, and Workforce Innovation. Again, going forward, we will be presenting from the strategic priorities. Kicking off with enrollment data, High School Partnership continues to enroll students from our local, from our local school districts. Right now, the HSP has about 29% of total enrollment across KCKCC. We are seeing amazing growth with online students, with online have grown since spring, a wrapping 22%. Not to mention, currently in the spring, we have 88 student visa holders. That is phenomenal. Workforce Innovation across the past five years has hosted about 589 student tours with 29 companies. 20% of those students have enrolled at KCC, and we are continuing to see growth in our Adult and Continuing Education Program with current 131 students enrolled across all programs in Adult and Continuing Education. Great job, team. When you're looking at the priority of student success, GED tested, and we have three students who have tested at Links and Correctional Facility. We're really excited about that because we're rapidly increasing the number of GED students in our programs. Not to mention, in online education, the team is pushing forward with the Genius Implementation. Right now, we are collaborating with our High School Partnership in order to help facilitate and streamline enrollment for our high school students. Again, looking at the support that we're providing for our international student population, this term alone, we have 36 students who received advising and mental health support. Not to mention, kudos to Dr. Kramer, along with Professor Flagerty, who have helped an international student from KCKCC land an internship at Yale. Thank you so much for this collaboration. Also, in online education, we are seeing growth with our AI-driven Blackboard features that are helping our students and our teachers have more engagement within our learning management system. Congratulations to our 16 students from Workforce Innovation that have graduated either from our Industrial Maintenance Program or from our welding program, which is in partnership with the United States Postal Service. Great job, everyone. Looking at quality programs and services, thank you so much to the grants team that provided a lot of support and guidance for Richard Wallace and the team over at Adults and Continuing Education in submitting the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act grant. That was a beast. Good job, team. Not to mention, the High School Partnership team has been working with our internal application team and our online education program to figure out best ways to help the application for high school students to transition seamlessly from their local schools to KCKCC. Congratulations again to Workforce Innovation. Not only did we finalize our pathway and our internal process and how to get apprenticeships registered with the state of Kansas from KCKCC, but we are now working with Kansas State University to have pathways from our apprenticeship programs to their programs. We are really pushing the opportunities that KCKCC could offer, starting here and going anywhere. As we continue looking to employ engagement through this division, we have offered a lot of professional development opportunities, particularly, we have two staff members who have become Pearson View Certified Test Administrators. We have ongoing training with our Genius Platform, and we're also hosting an internal webinar to help people understand pathways to apprenticeships and how we can have apprenticeships and not to help people understand pathways to apprenticeships and how we can have apprenticeships in non-traditional areas. With community engagement, through Workforce Innovation alone, KCKCC has offered over $14,000 in, in scholarships. That is phenomenal. Not to mention, through Adult and Continuing Education, we have increased our partnership with the Learning Club and Youth Ambassadors. High School Partnerships is working with Piper School District to have alignments from their academies, straight to KCC programs. And again, we are continuing to provide support to our international students by giving them snacks during finals and midterms and all those college-ready programs. Again, we invite you all to get involved with Educational Innovation and Global Programming. Feel free to email us or scan the QR code below. Thank you.
Thank you. Board, if you have any questions, if you'd like to send those to Dr. Mosher or myself, we'll get those to Dr. Raobi for an answer for you. This time, I'd accept a motion or to accept the report, please.
I, I just did have a, a comment, kudos for the, those involved in helping get, in that international student, getting that paid internship to, to Yale University, but I just wonder, what's the, since it's an international student, what, what is the college's liability? Will they come back to the college when they finish that internship? Just, what are the particulars on that?
Yeah, that's a good.
Dr. Kramer and Doc, and Professor Flattery and all involved, thank you for your work on that. It's impressive to get a internship like that, and it's paid as well, that's great. But, okay.
Yeah, we'll be able to follow up on that. It depends on which semester the student is in here at KCKCC, but we can get you more information. Dr. Raobi had a pre-scheduled event, what, she couldn't be here tonight, so we'll follow up with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have the Vice President of Marketing and Institutional Image Report with Ms. Chris Green. Good evening.
Hello.
We are going to start tonight with another video that we completed last semester. If Randy and his team will show that first.
The Music Department at Kansas City, Kansas Community College, is devoted to giving students the tools to be the most well-rounded, well-prepared musician that they can be, while also nurturing the person behind the music. Our primary focus is the type of music that frankly is Kansas City's cultural heritage: jazz, blues, rock and pop, and funk, and I think it's really what makes us special.
I'm able to come here and go to school and not only get like a crazy good education and love coming here every day, but for little to no cost and like no student debt, and I don't have to take out a loan.
The teachers are very cool. They actually care about you and your well-being.
I think my most favorite part about like the program is the community aspect. It's a ton of fun, it really is the place to be.
So that is just another sample of the great programs we have here. Tonight, I want to talk to you just about, really, four areas. The first is, you've heard of 40X that we're implementing. My teams are implementing one on customer service related to our support services in our division, and the second one is related to our website redesign as a project to help support recruitment and total, all, total enrollment in the 40X process. Next, I want to go to student success. In student success, we've been very involved in enrollment management and making sure that we are promoting the college and encouraging students to apply and enroll. Part of that is our continued focus in working with Archer Education on its two products, Captivate and Commit. I believe you were, you had a link shared with you, so you could see those experiences. And in that, we look at Captivate as a way to really engage students until they apply with video surveys and personal stories, as well as customized communication. And then with Commit, it takes them from application to enrollment and provides them a great checklist to help them go through the steps. Especially for first-generation students, it can be overwhelming, so we have taken the time to simplify the language and provide them tools right there that they can go back to anytime they need them. Also, we have started the FAFSA promotion for '25, and we are starting to communicate via digital advertising and email with those who have already completed their application. Related to quality programs, you saw the video, we are highlighting our quality programs every day, as well as the website redesign that will feature an academic webpage for all of our programs, and we're currently writing all of those, thanks to our faculty and staff in those areas for completing those surveys, so we could write that great content. And then finally, in community engagement, this month, we updated Fast Facts and are preparing all of our delegates who are going to Washington DC in February, and supporting the Community Engagement Board and its expansion, and providing materials for everybody in the community to use. I really want to take this time to thank our faculty and our staff for their great support of the website redesign. We have presented that to an open session of our faculty and staff, and over 96 people sat in. Then we recorded it and sent out a form. We have two more.
One minute.
Student, and student engagement opportunities this month to receive feedback, actually three, to receive feedback this month before we move forward to the next stage. My teams have all worked very hard to support the college, its enrollment, its video, every aspect. I want to take this opportunity to thank them for their continued hard work. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
More of a comment, I noticed on the web services, and I think this is what you're talking about right now, and that within increased student traffic, you're going to be working to make the website more student-focused, and that's where it should be anyway, so I'm excited to see that. So thank you, thank you, everyone.
And thank you for these, these great resources that we can use when we're interacting with the community and everybody. Really, they're fantastically professional, and they tell our story a lot better than probably I can stumble over it.
Yeah, our Community Engagement Board and Committee members ask for some publications that they can take with them when they're in the community, and Mary will get those to you soon.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you again, Ms. Green, appreciate it. Love the new video as well. Okay, next on our agenda, we have no unfinished business scheduled, so we will move to new business. This time, I would present to the board, as we do yearly, on your tables, you do have a form to sign this evening, and that is the KCKCC Board of Trustees Ethical Conduct Policy. Looks like there's no other additional action there, it's just, they asked me to announce that board members will each sign the KCKCC Board of Trustee Ethical Conduct Policy as standard practice. Those board members in the room will sign at the conclusion of the meeting, and those online will sign the document electronically. Next, another item for us to sign this evening is the, we will each sign the KCKCC Board of Trustees Confidentiality and Non-Disclosure Obligations of Trustees Policy as standard practice. And again, those board members in the room will sign at the conclusion of the meeting, and those online will sign the document electronically. Next, I would invite the presentation of the KCKCC 2025 Kansas Board of Regents Performance Agreement, presented by Mr. Jerry Pope, Vice President of Academic Affairs.
Thank you. For those of you who have been on the board for a little bit, or this looks a little bit different from the normal Kbor agreement, usually, or in the past, they've had data. And so we agreed to some performance metrics, they required three, we agreed to three, they've actually changed from that, and so now, at least for the next three years, we're agreeing to certain tasks. And so those tasks, and I've reported on them in the past, but you can see them in a copy of this report. Essentially, those tasks are co-requisite model for both developmental mathematics and developmental reading. The developmental course, at least at this point, and I've reported on this before, the plan is for that to go away as a standalone course, and it will be offered as a co-requisite course. They've also had math, had transfer degrees to have one of three math courses for the bachelor's degree. Prior to this agreement, it was always college algebra as the minimum, and so now there are three of those, and college algebra, of course, is one of those for the more STEM-related courses, but contemporary mathematics is one and statistics is the other. So part of what Dr. Kramer and I will do with the Academic Affairs Committee, the four-year institutions have identified those pathways, and so we will look to make sure that we have the requirement for the math course, the minimum requirement, that will satisfy those pathways into the four-year schools. And just, most of the STEM courses, of course, are going to be college algebra, one is music that's going to contemporary mathematics, and I think psychology has statistics. So there are just some, you know, some differences where students will not be required to just take college algebra. And then the other thing that we agreed to do is to have degree pathways, or at least, they, they use the term pathways, but what it really means is a plan of study. So now students can look in the catalog, and we've kept this in the catalog because Janice and I are kind of the keepers of the academic catalog, but our links on the website point to that one space, and you can see what the planned course of study is for each semester. You know, sometimes we have a one semester certificate, other times we have two semesters, and then all the way up to our four, uh, four semester, sometimes five semester degrees, just depending upon those degrees. And so we, we completed that. What we had to do is to, what I had to do is complete this form, Kbor staff graded us, if you will, and then based upon their grade, and there was some back and forth. So initially, they didn't like some of the things that I was doing, but it turns out that I was following what they wanted to do, they just couldn't quite find it. So we were approved for 100% of new funding. So if there's any new funding that comes up that the community colleges are eligible for, Kansas City Kansas Community College is eligible for 100% of that. And then for the next two years, our performance agreements will look very much like this. So I'll take any questions. That was just kind of a rough summary of this.
Is this something we are working back from, because it's highlighted, it says due July 1, 2024, and then in the body of it, it says it hopes to finish this in fall 2024 or spring 2025. So is this like after you're going back and forth with them, or?
Uh, so what was due, and this is, that's a very good question, because it is quite different from what has been in the past. We had to answer these questions as of July 1, 2024, and some of it included plans in the future. What we've had for the performance agreements in the past is that they've actually looked at data that was two years old. And so, you know, last year, the 2024 performance agreement looked at data from 2022. But for these new performance agreements, they're not, they're not looking for data, they're just looking for us to complete these tasks. And a lot of these tasks are to be completed, we were making essentially an agreement to do things in the, this current academic year.
This kind, this started way back in, in June of '24, July '24.
Yes.
And then it gets submitted to Kbor, and it goes back and forth, so that's more of the timeframe of the creation of the document than the implementation.
And, yes, and they actually just, the Board Academic Affairs Standing Committee, which is the committee now that approves this, met in November and approved it. I thought, so in the pa, in the previous years, that then goes to a consent agenda item to Kbor. And so I found out that they're not actually doing that same stat, that same procedure, it goes as a notice to Kbor. And so it was officially approved in November, but I was thinking it still had to go as in a consent agenda item to the whole, to all of Kbor, but they've changed that, that process a little bit, too. But it was approved in their November meeting, and it was passed on kind of as an informational item, rather than a consent agenda item. It's a little confusing as they, as they change their processes.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Do we have any other questions or comments from the board? All right, hearing none, I'd call for a motion to approve the KCKCC Academic Year 2025 Kansas Board of Regents Performance Agreement.
So moved.
Back in.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, I'd invite the presentation of the Proposed KCKCC Fiscal Year 2526 Annual Budget Calendar, presented by Dr. Schulte.
Good evening. Thank you again for the time. If you are looking at your board book, I believe it is page 137, the very last page of the board book. With that, the calendar presented as draft in front of you tonight, just not deviate from previous years, it's pretty much essentially the same calendar structure that you used last year as going, going through this. So as of this week, the detailed general ledger budgets or comparison reports are being sent to each department to collect that information from them as they look at. We provide them with where they are currently in the current fiscal year, what their budget was, and what their actual was the previous year to give some guidance. We then allow them time to, to review those, to put in their requests, their new asks, their strategic opportunities are then collected from each of those areas for our assessment. Gives us time to be able to sit with them, my, my office to sit with them, as well as vice presidents and others, to be able to assist if there are any questions in the budget development process as we go forward. The piece of giving them their previous year, their current actuals, their budget in previous year, gives some indication of the utilization of those funds in various areas, so if there are areas where we need to look at reallocation, if there's an area where they budgeted, say, $5,000, and historically they've spent $1,000, that gives an opportunity to say, do you need a $5,000 in that as an area for opportunity for reallocation? And February 11th, Board of Trustees Finance Committee will discuss tuition and fees, it's the time of year for us to be able to take a look at that. President Mosher and I began conversations in relation to tuition and fees, and that's in preparation for the eight, February 18th meeting, where we'll be able to bring forward to the Board of Trustees for approval of tuition and fees for the 2526 fiscal year. In March, the President's Extended Cabinet comes together, looking at revenue projections based on data that we are able to acquire, and then look at budget hearings, which are tentative as we go forward, depending on the information that we have. Then we go into President's Extended Cabinet, looking at the prioritization of those strategic opportunities, because again, in any budget cycle, it's a great opportunity to look at, what are our strategic investments as we move forward? What are those opportunities, and what does that mean for the college as a whole as we move forward? Continue those conversations, and they roll into President's Extended Cabinet, and that collectively is a group that encompasses representatives from all across campus. So when I say President's Extended Cabinet, it brings individuals from all areas on campus with representation to be able to have the discussion around what those strategic opportunities are, and also what the presentation of the draft budget looks like as well. Then we come into June, and the Board of Trustees Finance Committee will begin and have a discussion on the mill levy rate for the 2526 and revenue-neutral rate presentation of the draft budget, including capital projects for that fiscal year as well. KCKCC receives valuations from the Unified Government in June as well, giving us an indication of where we are in relation to those rates, as we advise the Board of Trustees and others around what position the institution is looking at from a financial perspective. On the 17th, we would discuss the mill late levy rate for 2526 and revenue-neutral rate presentation of draft budget, including capital projects for that as well, so coming into looking at what that draft is as we move forward. Then in July, the Board of Trustees will have an approval of the Notice of Public Hearing on the mill levy rate for 2526 and revenue-neutral rate. on the mill levy rate for 2526 and revenue-neutral rate hearing, and a budget hearing for the FY2526 budget. So again, each one of these is a progression towards us being able to move this forward to all of you for finalization and approval. Finance submits the mill levy rate for the 2526, and if applicable, the intent to exceed revenue-neutral at that time. The Unified Government mails notice to taxpayers, and then in August, Finance submits notice of public hearing to the newspaper. August 20th, or 19th, Board of Trustees Meeting will look at a public hearing, the mill levy rate for 2526, and if applicable, revenue-neutral rate hearing, approval of a resolution to approve exceeding revenue-neutral rate if applicable. Public hearing, budget hearing on FY2526, budget vote on certification setting the mill levy rate, approval of a motion to adopt the FY2526 budget, and the approval of a motion to adopt the FY2620, 2526 budget. And then at the end of August, Finance submits certification of budget to the county clerk, which will then conclude our process of our budget calendar for FY2526. As noted previously, it's not a, it's not a deviation from what was used this last cycle for all of you as the Board of Trustees. Really, it's just an amendment of the dates to correspond with the calendar year.
Thank you, Dr. Schulte. Any questions from the board?
Nope.
No?
Yep.
One thing I would just have us all thinking about as we get a little bit closer to our retreat that we'll have in February, is starting to put some thoughts together as individual board members around where our priorities are, where we may be leaning when it comes to revenue-neutral rate discussion. As Dr. Schulte's just lined out there, we've got a lot of work for them to do over the next eight months, and I know, speaking from experience, with this on the other side of things, that one of the most difficult things that we can do for them is have them do this eight months of work and then surprise them with a decision at the last minute in August when we formally have to make that decision. So I would encourage us to be thinking about that and be ready to give some direction where we're on that issue earlier rather than later. So with that, if there are no other questions or comments, I'd call for a motion to approve the KCKCC Fiscal Year 2526 Annual Budget Calendar.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Brings us to the end of our meeting this evening. At this time, I'd call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned. Good evening, everyone.
I have a question.
Good evening.
About these.
Good evening.